Welcome back. We had a week off. We've got, I see Ansa, Chad, Frank, Priyanka, welcome. A bunch of folks in here and this is for the ACP nine. Almost did it again. ACP four twenty. The ACA nine twenty is something entirely different and we're probably not going to get into that one. We're going to continue our journey learning about Jira Soft. Linked out. Yes, Frank, unfortunately. We're going to continue our journey about Jira's service projects. Susanna, welcome. Kit Kat Black with two Ts. Welcome. Nada, good to see you. Vlodimir, hope I'm saying that right. Natalie, glad you're with us. We're going to continue learning about Jira's service projects. For folks who haven't been here the whole time, they have changed this exam since we started studying. We'll be able to sign up for it on the fifteenth, which is tomorrow. So I will be signing up for this exam tomorrow, or maybe I'll do this live next week. Frank has a good question though. How did I survive team? So team, I'll talk about this briefly. Is it Atlassian's big customer event? They have two of these every year. This one was in Anaheim, so in North America, kind of near Los Angeles, if you're familiar where that is on a map. I'll be honest, for me, Los Angeles, San Diego and Anaheim are all the same area of the world. I know that's wrong. I'm just bad at geography. So they had this big event. And it had, I don't know how many thousands of people, big events from Atlassian, lots of great stuff. One interesting thing I learned that kind of impacts this group is that Atlassian actually built its own learning management system, its own LMS. And we see this when we go into the learning platform for Atlassian Learning. So it's no longer Atlassian University. Atlassian Learning now looks and feels different. I really like this change. I didn't realize it was going to happen. So two weeks ago, when we all looked at it, everything was different. But for me, it's an amazing thing because it really tells me that Atlassian is, I'll say, putting its money where its mouth is. They are really investing in the ability for us to learn their stuff. Many companies just buy an off-the-shelf learning management platform that is good enough, but Atlassian instead decided to build their own to meet our needs. And that's really cool. I'm still learning how it works, of course. But that for me was the biggest thing that impacts this. There were other updates. I have a live stream Thursday where I'll talk about like a team twenty-five retrospective. And I had lots of live content. So check out my YouTube channel. You know, live interviews with folks, little shorts explaining what I learned, that kind of thing. I am still recovering from team though. I'm still a bit tired. I'm going to keep drinking my coffee and let's get started with, or rather let us continue. Excuse me, our learning. Oh, and my screen share is blank. Of course, it's blank. Why would it be anything other than blank? Quick introduction. My name is Rob. I have had a career in different parts of information technology. I started working on the IT help desk. So ticketing systems go all the way back to university or college for me. I didn't use Jira there though. I used other, something called FileMaker Pro, which I think was a homebrew, something we kind of built out internally. Rebecca, good to see you. I began using Jira Service Management in Jira about ten years ago. And I've, all of my learning has been by doing. I've been given the tool and told, hey, you have to use this. And that was great. And I can learn by doing. It takes time though. It takes a long time to figure things out and it means I only learn specific things that I happen to use. And this means my knowledge is limited. I know some things fairly well and a lot of things I don't know at all. So that's why I get certifications. The problem with certifications is they take time. You have to go take the exam. You have to study for it. You have to prepare. I have earned other certifications like the PMP or CompTIA Security Plus or whatever. But that was before I had kids and a demanding job and all of you wonderful people. Michael, we're not all from US. Who did I see? We've got Amsterdam, Berlin, India, France. So a lot of folks in your area of the world, but other spots as well. And there's probably other folks in chat who haven't chimed in and that's okay from other spots. So I'm doing these live sessions, one, so I can learn, but two, so all of you can also learn. Please use the chat to communicate. You can see and hear me. I can't see hearing you, which is fine. The challenge is if you have a question or if you need help, or if you want me to dig into something, the only way I know is if you use the chat. Glenn and Natalie, welcome from Europe. So please use the chat to ask questions, or if you see someone else asking a question and you want to add to it, or you can answer it, jump in there too. I learn a lot from this group. No one perspective is perfect and no one person knows everything. And that's one thing I love about the people who show up here is you're willing to share and help each other. So please jump in if you know something or can share. It also helps to like and subscribe. That lets me know what y'all enjoy. I'm going to keep doing these ACP trainings. I do need to figure out the next one though. I had someone at team let me know ACP one twenty might be a good option. But if you have another professional level certification you want to learn next, let me know. This Friday, I'm starting the ACA nine hundred, which is Jira Software Essentials. So if you're looking into Jira Software, or if you don't want to go through the whole ACP, or if you have a team that could benefit from that, jump on in. That is the most popular one because it's about software. It's for software developers, et cetera. This week, we're going to finish off workflows. I think we had one segment left and then talk about automations. I mentioned a new learning path. I'll drop this link in the chat shortly. But this learning path is more tailored to the, to the new exam. And they changed the exam to focus more on what Atlassian feels like we do regularly. So I'll drop this link in chat shortly. We'll be using it today. But also a lot of different resources for you all if you're studying. Please get a practice instance if you don't have access to one. You can get a free version of Jira. You'll have most of what you need to cover on the exam. But all of these are also recorded, so please review them and also check out my blog. I do recaps of these sessions every week. And I also have things like flashcards to help you all out. I also have one voucher left to give away, so please scan this. I'll probably give it away next week. Because next week we'll be able to sit the exam, but you have to take the exam by June first. So you only got about six weeks if you do win. This is worth about two hundred and fifty bucks. So the nice people at Atlassian gave me some just to give to folks, which I think is immense. Christina, welcome. And that is my reminder to go over here. So I'm just going to go find that Atlassian page. Good, my transition worked. So again, we can't sign up for the exam until tomorrow, so I will sign up for it tomorrow and one of the sessions I will walk through how to do this. Susanna likes automations because you can use post functions instead of automations. I will be very honest. I am not the best with workflows and that is because my experience has not been as a Jira admin. So Susanna, I might have to lean on you to help correct me or let me know what I maybe screwed up if I get something wrong here. I will drop this link in chat. This is the link where you can go to get all the great prep information. And this is what I used to study. Also, I'll recommend if you don't have one next to you, grab a notepad and grab a pen. This helps me study. I will just write things down. Vignesh, welcome. Glad you could make it, my friend. And you'll see me writing stuff down as we chat. Jira Service Projects for Cloud. Just going to open this up. Is this the one? Oh no, this is the prep resources. Where was the really big one? So there are now two sections in here. This one, build a foundation of knowledge. These on-demand courses are longer and much more in-depth. So this is one change I've noticed. And this has the learning paths. The practice and prepare with study resources. This is more like to test your knowledge or to give you little exam hints, they call them. We might go through these in a future session, but this is definitely worth checking out. Because if I open these up, this is more like a little hint to remind you, hey, about users, things you should really dig into. So they're not going to give you answers to the exam, but they're going to point out things that you probably really should focus on. And this is a great hint and a great reminder of what, if you only have limited time, you maybe should look into. Configure Atlassian Tools. I think we were in here. All right, complex workflows, I think is where we were. Ah, good, and my Zoom works. Quick orientation, this sidebar is new in this LMS and this is the different lessons in the course. You can expand them and click through. So navigation for me is easier and then the meat, the interesting stuff is here on the right. You can also listen to it. I haven't done this yet, but I'd probably do this on walking around. Frank's got a good addition to Susanna's point. Depending on the tier or level of Confluence Cloud you're on, you only get so many automations. So automations only can run so many times if you're on free or standard or premium. But if you do something through a workflow, that's not an automation, so it doesn't count towards that limit. So this is a way to help get more, I'll say juice for the squeeze out of Jira. You could have a post function or something in the automation do the similar or same thing. Justin, thank you for the welcome back. Honestly, I miss live streaming. I enjoy doing this. I missed all y'all. It was nice to have a little bit of time away, but I'm glad I'm back. And I've got some new tricks and some new things that you might see me adding. And some new things you won't see me adding because they're behind the scenes. It will make my life a bit easier. Okay, where were we? Triggers. I think we started talking about this last time. But they automatically do things with transitions. Their example is Bitbucket. Bitbucket is Atlassian's code repository. It's similar to GitHub, if you're familiar with that. But their example is if someone makes a pull request, if they need to get code from something, automatically change the status of that work item. If folks missed it as well, work item is what issues are now. They've renamed them to make them more inclusive, which I like. That was a very strong chin. Oh no. Excuse me. That was also my first time live streaming remotely, so to speak. I learned a lot and a lot about what not to do. I might need to do something about my chin. Thank you for telling me now, Justin, after I've maybe made a fool of myself. So as I'm reading this stuff about triggers, they mainly mention developers and this is where I need to learn more about it. You know, they keep saying integrate it with your site development tool. Frank, curious if you can help us out here. Are triggers only for development tools or can these be used for other things? And I'm asking because this documentation suggests that they're just for developers. One thing we do need to know though, is it ignores conditions, validations and permissions. So the trigger can override those things to still make the transition occur, even if someone doesn't necessarily have the access to it. Adding a trigger, click a transition, there's white ovals, add an event. Another good reminder on triggers, they can transition work from, don't put them on global transitions. Global transitions allow any status to go to any other status. You'll see it as the word all pointing at the status. I do this a lot when I'm being lazy and I just want to say, hey, any, any ticket can go from any state to any other state. But here we probably don't want to do that. Because the trigger could accidentally fire and put it in the wrong status. As I read this too, anything in the blue box, I'm going to remember and write down and maybe put that on a flashcard because the nice people at Atlassian think it's important enough to put in an info box, that probably means it'll show up. I am more familiar with conditions. Criteria workflow has to meet. Typically, I've seen this as a person or as a specific field has to be filled out. The biggest use case I can think of is before an issue can be moved, like has to have a certain level of security with issue level security. And if that's missing, it has to be added or something has to happen. Excuse me. Conditions are prereqs. Yeah. So that transition just simply isn't available if the condition isn't met. This is where when I'm talking to my team, I'll ask them, hey, does anything specific need to occur before you can move the ticket to done? Or move it to a certain transition? And this does support, excuse me, does support and/or logic. Used conditions, Justin? Sorry, what is it in this context? Also, there is a tiny delay on the chat. I apologize. I've noticed that in these. So sometimes I'll be talking about one thing and you all will be chatting about something else. So apologies if there's a bit of a delay. There can also be a delay between people sending their messages in, which I've seen. Route between statuses. Curious if you could expand on that a little bit, Justin? It sounds like what you're saying is you, unless a certain condition is met, you can't go between status A and status B. Would that be what we're thinking of? So if I'm missing the location on a ticket, I can't route it to approval, but I could put it into in progress. I'm making up examples. Validators, check an endpoint, an endpoint, excuse me, an input. An input is valid. One that I've used a lot as this first one. Or one similar to it when a ticket is reopened, make sure that a field is updated. One that we had, or another one that we had too, was if you had to move a ticket back to, from an escalated status into a non-escalated status. The user had to change a particular field. And so what would happen was if I escalated a ticket to say Frank, and Frank looked at it and said, this isn't an escalation, before he could give it back to me and put it back to in progress or being triaged, he had to fill out a why are you de-escalating this field? It had a different name, but this was used to ensure that data was collected. Other use cases though are you can check the permission. So you can check other things. It's not just a field on the ticket itself. But it's used to make sure that particular information is available on the ticket. And the other thing you can do is have an error pop up. Where possible, please have intelligent error messages. Don't just have a random code and don't leave it as the default. I tend to include a little bit more verbose error, just so folks know what's happening. Sometimes that error message includes a point or two other information explaining what's happening or why they're getting the error. And this is a good comment here. Transition, validators work with transition screens. So as you're transitioning between statuses, a screen can pop up you can fill in. This is what I use frequently or I've seen used frequently, where if I move it from in progress back to triage, that screen pops up that says, hey, you know, what is the reason for this de-escalation? Or hey, fill in this other information to make sure folks have what they need. Post functions. We're going to pop into Jira afterward under this section and see what this all looks like. But post functions do something after the transition. So validators occur during it, like while we're trying to do it. Conditions are something that have to be met before we start. Post functions happen after. For example, automatically reassign it after it's done. It's got to meet all the conditions in validators though. So it's got to get through those first two steps. Sorry Frank. This is where I'm laughing because of, like I mentioned, there's a chat delay, right? I'm just chuckling Frank because we both kind of just said the same thing, right? Like the condition is what occurs before we do anything. The validation is during and the post function is after. So thank you for putting that in chat so folks can see it. But that's how I think of it as well. We have these three different tools that let us control the workflow at different points. And this is where us as admins or we as admins, whichever one's correct, we have to understand the need of the team. Like when do these things have to occur so we can then put them in the right spot? But this is something I'm, I'll probably add to our, what's it called? Flashcards on my site, just to help us remember that this is how it works. Justin, conditions don't clue in the agent as to what is missing. Oh, interesting. So conditions won't show, will just prevent the transition from being available. It won't tell you, hey, fill in this field, it sounds like. But the validation is after you transition, it'll prompt you or give you that error. And then post functions occur later. This example, right here, the most common use case I've seen for this, when a ticket is put into a done status, you can fill in the resolution field. Why was it put into done? You can also clear that when the ticket moves back out of the done or a done status. Now, I've seen this done quite frequently to ensure that the resolution doesn't remain on the ticket. This is a common source of frustration I've seen where a ticket will be in an in-progress state and it will have a resolution. That doesn't make any sense because a resolution is why the ticket was closed, but it's not closed. This post function is probably missing. So this ability for Jira to clear it needs to be done. In properties, let us add more things to it. Properties are something that took me a while to understand, at least the concept of. You'll see this term key value pair show up. I'll scroll down just a little. The key is the name of the thing. The value is what it's set to. So this line here, the key indicates what the property is, while the value specifies the data. You probably need to know, I need to play a lot more with these. But it lets you more finely tune your workflows. You can reorder things, restrict the availability of certain options, et cetera. Kari, for conditions and validations, put in an error. Yes. Almost anywhere I see the ability to make an error, an error, excuse me, an error, an error, I can speak. I always put in an error message letting folks know why. It takes me all of ten seconds as an admin and it saves them a ton of frustration. All right, best practices. This will probably be the last thing we talk about here before we jump into automations because we're already about halfway through. Which is absolutely crazy to me. All right, best practices. Make sure post functions are in order. So when we think of any computer system, computers process things in a sequence. They do it very quickly, but it's still first thing, second thing, third thing. So the example here is we want to make sure that we don't copy a value before it exists. Actually, this would be a fun thing to make happen, like do this error to see how it behaves. Some systems though won't recognize that it's missing. So some systems aren't smart enough to let you know. Another thing is make sure what you're doing is necessary. And these best practices are other things that I would sit down and study and just understand. I wouldn't memorize them necessarily. But just be aware because these will be common challenges that people run into. And then be careful with third-party apps. If that app goes away, that post function will stop working. Same thing with properties and with all of these. Make sure they're necessary. When we look, when I think about systems, it's very easy to get stuck and just keep adding stuff. But we want to make sure before we add this that the complexity is needed and necessary. And when you're working with properties, you got to enter it correctly. Extra spaces at the front of the end, an extra period in the wrong spot. Because you're manually typing in the property, it's very easy to mistype it and then it will just break. Another thing that's very tempting is to use properties to control permissions. Atlassian recommends that we don't, we do that sparingly, I'll say. We have the permission scheme and permission setup on the project to handle permissions. So we should be using that. But we should use properties for cases where we absolutely need it. And this one I found interesting. Instead of using a property to make work read only, only allow Jira admins to edit work items. This is a good point. Admins should come in if they're needed to help do things. So giving admins the ability to take action through this edit permission. At least lets you go in and unlock things if you need to. Whereas if you use the property, you might end up with a ticket that's just un-editable. It's just stuck. Some other best practices, you know, consider when you need a workflow. And this is where, like, questions like this will probably show up on the exam, but it's more just good practice and it's something not in the system. So we as admins need to sit down and really make sure that, hey, do we need this thing? Same idea with the post functions, the validators, the conditions. Do we truly need them or are we patching up a process that doesn't work? Be aware of which projects use the workflow. Keep them simple. I think this came up last time, but always test them. If you have a sandbox environment or a test project, you know, copy off the workflow scheme and tinker with it there just to make sure it works. And then troubleshooting. This stuff I would definitely look into and this is something I will take another look at later. But these all seem to be common challenges people run into that I could easily see coming up on the exam. For example, if you can't comment, check the Jira Permission Comment Property. If you can't update a field, check that it's on the transition screen. These are also things that you will probably run into in your work as a Jira admin or in your job just using Jira. I have gone to my Jira admin and suggested something like this because of this training course and I was able to unlock a team and help them out. So you don't have to be the Jira admin in your organization for this to be useful. You can help out that admin or help out other people. Frank's got another tip on properties. You can limit the available resolutions. Resolutions are instance-wide if I believe there's no scheme for them, which means every resolution would be available on every project. And so you can use those properties to prevent certain projects or certain workflows from using specific resolutions if you need to. All right, folks. During the week, I do my best to put a lot of information in LinkedIn. So I'm doing like daily posts on things like Confluence, Jira, other things. Just drop the link in there. Check that out. Vikram, good day. Good to see you, my friend. We're going to dig into automations. A little bit curious, who has used an automation before? And what did you use it for? We won't dig into all of these. We more need to understand like the concept of automation than we'll dig into how to build them. I don't use them nearly enough, I'll be honest. I use them more in Jira than in Confluence. But I also acknowledge there's a lot of use cases for them that I haven't run into, so I'm just unaware of some things it can do. Basically, automations have the system take action for us. Doesn't require coding, however, they can be incredibly complicated and frustrating. So this is where it's important to get hands-on into practice and having a test project is very useful. So you can go in and tinker with it, saying you don't break other people's stuff. I tend to use them anytime I notice I'm doing something manually over and over and over and over. Things to look into are what we can automate. And a lot of this will help. Here we go. In Jira, Jira Service Management, Jira Product Discovery and Confluence can support automations currently. Now, the list here is not everything it can do. What we'll do is we'll go into Jira in a minute and just look at these. Susanna uses them to comment on issues that haven't been updated. I use that one frequently. Hey, Rob, I've noticed you haven't updated this ticket. Do you still need it? Sending notifications. To update subtasks with epic links. Barbara's got an interesting comment here right at the start. I've used it, but I didn't set it up. This is where we don't necessarily have to be the person to set the thing up. But if we understand how the tool works and understand what's possible, we can then go talk to someone who has that ability or has more knowledge. This is usually the position I'm in. I know what's possible with an automation. So I go to my admin and I say, hey, admin, here's what I want you to help me do. I either can't figure it out or I can't do it. Sort them by issue type and give next steps. I haven't done that one. If you could share more information on that Kit Kat, I'd be curious what the use case is, just so I can expand my own knowledge. One thing to know about automations is there are global automations, which can be applied across projects. So if you're a product admin, you can do this. Typically, I'm a project admin and that exists just within a single project. So let's pop over to Jira real quick. Oops, this one. I'm in the wrong one, aren't I? Here we go. Get out of the way, Loom. And first, we wanted to go look at workflows, issues, workflows, workflows. Here we go. So I'm on the admin screen just under workflows. I got ahead of myself with automations. I'm sorry about that. And I can see a list of workflows that I have. I'm just going to open up this top one. And view it. So this is a very, very simple workflow. Three statuses. I've got transitions. But if I click the edit button, I can go in and click on statuses and see information like properties. So this is how I would come in and modify these things. An important thing with workflows is they're in a draft state until I publish them. So as I make changes, they aren't live until I hit go. But I can click in and edit things like properties on it. Oop, come on Chrome. I'm making a very bad example, a property just called name. I can add properties to it to help control it. If I go back. I can edit it, change the status name. Or even do things like include an approval step. So this is the screen where I'd be editing workflows. I got to that from the gear, issues and then just workflows. There is also a text editor for these. This scares me, so honestly, I don't use it. What I will do is make a more detailed video on workflows and share that out with folks, just so y'all have it. That digs much more into the post functions and everything else. I do want to get into automations though, because we have about 26 minutes left to learn everything we can about automations. JJ, where'd you go? Automations live under project settings and then looking for automation. Awesome. One thing about automations, it's nice, if you're on premium or higher, you can use Elasian Intelligence just to have it build one for you. I use this a lot to learn how they work or how to make one. The other thing they have is a lot of templated automations. I always recommend folks just look at these just to see what's there. Excuse me, this has given me a lot of ideas. I don't use Rovo yet. One of the big announcements at Team is Rovo is now included in Jira and Confluence Premium and Higher and soon to be Standard. So I'll get to play with it, but I can come in here and see, hey, what can it do? I can open this up and it's talking to a Rovo agent to do something. Oh, interesting. So it's using Rovo to help automate priority. I'm just gonna find one that I'm more familiar with, that's fairly straightforward. Here we go. And here is one of the most more basic automations. They all have a few different parts, but they have to have a trigger, the thing that tells it to start. And an action, what it's gonna do. So the trigger's the blue one, the action's the, sorry, the trigger's the green one, the action's the blue one. They can also have conditions and this lets you filter out. So it starts when an issue's created and then it checks to see, hey, what request type is being used? And then it says, hey, is the approver empty? So when I think of a workflow, I tend to write it down and just in whatever language and I'll say in English, because that's what I speak. But I'll write it down, I'll say, when someone makes an issue and if it's a certain issue type and there's no assignee, then do this thing. And that'll help me think through what are the parts. Seen the chat go bonkers here, one for HR that links tickets. Oh, I like that. It's challenging to templatize tickets in Jira. You can have one and copy it. I haven't found a good way out of Jira standard, stock Jira, except for automations. So you could build out an automation like Justin is suggesting that, say, HR has to onboard somebody. You can give them a manual trigger, they just push a button and that makes all the tickets they need to onboard them. Susanna, templates help a lot, they can save a lot of pain. Yes. Every time I go to make an automation, the first thing I do is ask myself, is there a template for that? Or is there a template that is similar to it? Because you can start the template like we saw here and then edit it. So this is the basics of an automation, it's got these parts, a trigger, conditions and then some kind of action. The other thing they might have is called a branch. And branches are useful and also confusing. But you can have a branch that runs, say, for every subtask on an issue. So it basically allows it to repeat or iterate over a group of things, instead of having to trigger multiple times. So if, for example, this issue had a bunch of subtasks, I might have a branch that says for each subtask, go do something. Building simple rules, this will be similar to what we just spoke to. But this bit right at the top, I'll try and get a better zoom, whoopsies. Automation rules are if-then statements. And again, that's a simple way to think of it. Computers just do if-then really well. I also joke, I pick on interns a lot, they're wonderful folks. But I say, if I could explain this to an intern, the newest person at the company with the least experience in a plain language that they would understand, that's how I have to explain it to Jira. Why is Justin screaming about trees? And they don't have cereal. Why are you talking about cereal, Justin? And now I'm hungry. How is cereal not an emoji? Oatmeal? Nope, nothing. I'll just respond with my cute little quokka. There we go. Alright, this is actually a good point that I'm jokingly saying Justin is yelling at us. So, parallel and serial are concepts with computers. A serial system does things one at a time. So first thing, second thing, third thing, fourth thing. Think of it like a line. You've probably heard the term serial number. Serial numbers are put on an item sequentially. So the first thing made is one, then two, then three, then four. Yes, Frank, serial with an S. Parallel happens simultaneously. So when things happen in parallel, they happen at the same point in time. What Justin is reminding us here is that they happen at once. So while it might visually look like the branch occurs, here, let me put one back in here. While it looks like it's occurring after, it's actually occurring all at the same time. To clarify, Justin, is it what is within the branch? Oops, sorry, let me zoom out here. Is it what within the branch is occurring or the whole branch is happening at the same time as any other action? That's something I didn't know and that's a good reminder. That could be confusing when the automation triggers. We might look at a bunch of tickets and see them all occur at once or parts of the automation fail. Because we had assumed the first ticket gets updated in the second and the third and try and operate on the first one when really it all just blew up, happened simultaneously. Awesome. And this is why I love this group. We've got all this knowledge that many folks, myself included, don't have. We can add a delay to an automation so we can have it wait a few seconds. We're getting a bit advanced here, but this is important because automations take time to run. And when we start running automations, you'll notice it'll tell you how long it took. This is important because it will slow down Jira a bit. You'll notice when you hit create, it might take a while. Because Confluence, I was gonna say Confluence, because Jira has to take time to process and think about it. However, you only get up to 65 things in an automation, that's just the limit. And that delay is one of those things. So if you have a longer automation, you might end up with problems because it's shorter than it needs to be. Ah, excuse me. Okay, we spoke about triggers, that's the thing that starts the rule and there are many kinds of triggers. What I like to do is just open up an automation. Let me actually just delete everything in here. Go away. I'll delete that. These are all of the triggers on the right here and of course, my big fat head is in the way. Run away. I wouldn't recommend memorizing these, but definitely be aware of how to find them. And just know some of the more common ones, issue created, something changes on a field. There's a comment, an issue's moved. Some of these can also talk to other systems, for example, Compass is integrated. And you can also do webhooks. I've had some fun with webhooks passing tickets between projects when I couldn't otherwise. So that's our triggers, what tells Jira to start the automation? Multiple work items to act when a work item is transitioned, excuse me? Conditions in my mind to let you filter down what happens, additional criteria. In this example, if a Confluence page has a label, a piece of information on it. I've seen it used in Jira, a certain team is assigned to a ticket or a certain user is on it. And you can layer conditions. This is where it can get complicated, but this is where it's important to understand what does your team need to do and why are they doing it? So you can then filter down, oh, only the equity team, you know, should be able to do this thing. Or only the equity team should be excluded from it. Unless we have actions, this is what it does. Automatically add labels. I use this one right now to help a recruiting team assign tickets based on the reporter. We apply a certain label to it and then assign it to certain people based on wherever it came from. So that's another use case in Jira Service Management, a ticket comes in, evaluating things on that ticket and then assigning it to a specific person or a specific group of people, so they have the information they need. We spoke about templates, please go look at templates. Again, they are sources of inspiration and just, they will shortcut, as I think it was Susanna mentioned. They will help you skip a lot of pain because they're just pre-built. Some fun little hand-drawn arrows here. Rule details section. I feel like naming convention shows up in every single one of these that I do with this group. But please give them good names. The name is typically the only way to know what the automation does, short of opening it up and reading it. If it's just you in the instance, that might be fine, but typically there are other admins. And this example here, close a duplicate request in a certain project is much better than just the default name. So if, work with your team to figure out how you're gonna name these things. And I owe y'all a video on naming conventions, because that is so insanely important. Convention, video. Workflow, video, okay. I also enter a description, again, anywhere there's a description or error field, I fill it out with something. That, at the very least, will help future you when you go look at this automation in six months and go, huh, what does that do? It will also help other admins, so other people in the future who come look at that thing, even if you're not at the same organization anymore. Will be able to help you out and I keep forgetting to do that. Sorry, I have a new tool here to help me manage my stream. One thing it lets me do is insert markers into my recording, so I can make chapters easier. Frank, you're a little bit slow today, is everything okay, my friend? Usually you're the first one to mention naming conventions. The scope, where it applies, so which projects. The owner, you know what, let's just pop this open in Jira, oops, don't do that. Come here. Do I have existing? Ah, rule details, here we go. So the name. The description they mentioned, always fill that out. The scope, by default, it's the project it's made in. But if you're a global admin, you can change the scope to other projects, other things. I'll quickly open that up. So now I've changed to my global settings and I can tell because the sidebar is different. But this could be a global automation. If I go to the rule details here. I might have it run across different things. So this is something project admins can't do. But if I'm in a big company that has multiple service desks and they all need the same automation, I might make it global or I might make it just across specific projects. So this is something else to consider and this is why the company-managed projects can be so useful. Global automations can run on team-managed projects, but I need to expand my thinking across my entire company, not just what does Rob's one project need? The actor is who will, who appears when the automation runs? So if there's a comment, who will it come from or when I'm in the history of the issue or work item? Who will it run as? The default is automation for Jira. Who gets an email if something breaks? And then who can edit it? Typically, I leave this one as all admins. I haven't run into problems where I want to lock this down. I typically just leave it open. I could see instances though where I just want to make sure, hey, only myself and one other admin can edit this or a few, just so folks don't go in and mess up something critical. But this is a good example of be very careful if you choose to lock down the automation, because then maybe only you can do it. And Frank's advice on naming, consider your future clueless self, which doesn't know what you did there. Yes. I always think if I came into a company and didn't know anything about the setup, what would I want to call it? Because that will help me later. This last checkbox is interesting. I personally haven't done this, but you can, by default, rules. Automation rules cannot trigger other automations. You can however do that, so it will ignore the automation if a criteria is met when it runs, unless you check the box. Ansa, don't leave us hanging. How many? What is the limit? Actually, I don't know offhand. There are, let's see, Jira pricing. Honestly, I always come in here and I search. Oh, Gojira, Gojira. That's a fun pop quiz, where does the name Jira come from? Automation limits, here we go. I'm just looking at Jira's pricing page. And in FreeJira, you get 100 rules per month. It goes up to 1700 in standard. And then the limit goes by per user. So depending on the tier you're on, you'll have a limit to the number of runs you get. Ansa, were you referring? Were you referring to the number of rules in automation or the number of times it can run in a time period? Because those are both important things to understand. We can have 65 steps in the automation or things, but we can only run it a certain number of times across our instance or by user, depending on our tier. If you're on enterprise, you get unlimited. I don't know if these limits will show up in the exam, but they are very good to understand. Because as admins, we will need to know that, so we can best advise our team. Okay, using AI, if you're on cloud premium or higher, you have Elasian Intelligence. How to write a good, okay. I'm kinda gonna skip through this. It's just going in and typing in what you need it to do, so I'll quickly just demonstrate that. I don't want to spend too much time on it because I'm not sure how much that will really show up on the exam. But here I can just type in something. When a ticket is created in a certain project, add a comment for Rob, asking him to triage it. This is probably a really bad rule, not a good example. Okay. Oh, it was both, perfect. Justin, as a team, we got there. And Ansa, thank you for reminding us of that, because those are important limits that we need to understand. So appreciate the call out. Susanna, yes. Gojira, as I understand it, is the Japanese name for what I in America called Godzilla. It started out as a bug tracking tool, so they would go stomp bugs like Godzilla stomps things. This is my understanding of the story and then they just shortened the name to Jira. So that's why if you look up the word Jira, it's not a real word, because they stole it from the name of Godzilla. Which is just a fun fact, that probably isn't also on the exam. But here I used that automation or that AI to make this automation. It's reminding me up here in the corner, hey, you made this with AI. Always double-check what you make with AI. It's a great tool, but we want to make sure it does what we expected. So here's the comment that it added. I use AI, Elasian Intelligence, to make automations just to see what it comes up with. And again, as a good starting point to learn how it works or what's possible. It'll help tell you if it can validate things. So yeah, if you're using AI to make automations, just be smart and double-check that it does what you need. It's not Jaira? Oh no. The project name, huh? I'll try and stay out of that rabbit hole, but that to me is just fascinating stuff. Excuse me. Alright, more complex automation rules, smart values. Um, all right, more complex automation rules. Smart values, um, give me headaches and it's because I don't understand them enough. Um, let me scroll over here. Um, smart values are, I think of them as variables and that's what Atlassian calls them thankfully. Uh, but they allow us to store dynamic data in a, an action or a condition. Um, typically I use a smart value to figure out what day or time it is, or to pull like a username. Um, smart values show up, here we go, in these double squiggly brackets. Um, and they have a naming convention. For example, if I'm referencing the, the body of a comment, it'll be comment dot body in squiggly brackets. Or if I need to get the body of the comment from the work item that triggered the automation. Trigger work item dot comment dot body. So you can kind of read it like a sentence backwards. Get me the body of a comment. Get me the body of a comment from the triggering work item. So if I read them backwards, that's one way to think of them. Now, there are some that might be more common than others. For example, I use now quite a bit just to figure out what time and day is it right now? So I can either trigger the automation at a certain time or put that information on a ticket or somewhere else. Um, I almost always look these up in the Atlassian documentation. And I'm just gonna put that in the chat. Um, I try not to memorize them, so I don't put that in my brain. I can go look it up very easily. Instead, I just go to that link and that shows me what they are. Um, we spoke about branching. Um, an independent sub-rule within an automation, that's much better than whatever I call them. Um, they are optional, but the important thing to remember is they run conditions and actions across related work items. The example I always think of is a subtask. If a task has multiple subtasks, you can have this just run over it multiple times. Uh, we've got advanced branching, uh, uses smart values. I haven't used advanced branching, honestly. I tend to use the related work item, the branch rule. And running it against either children or the subtask. Um, I think the important thing to keep in mind is anytime we have a, a group of related work items we need to operate against, the branch might be able to help us out there. Uh, and honestly, I typically, when I have to use a branch, I end up beating my head against it. I go in and try it multiple times, uh, to try and make it work. Justin, I'm not convinced you both aren't the same person. I haven't seen you both in the same room, so. Um, when would you use a branch rule? I would, I will re, I will review this, because I am so confused by this stuff, but I would recommend going through this section about when, when you would use it and why? Uh, and figuring out what the use cases are, um, because something like this might show up on the exam. They give us some description of what they want to do, uh, and then we have to figure out how to, how to configure it. And they, they give us these great examples of when it's triggered. If it's missing an epic link, comment on it. So here's a good example of I trigger the automation, a manual trigger, and then it runs some JQL to get a list of tickets and it does something against all those tickets. And even saying that aloud has given me ideas on how I could use this. Yeah. So just another example of how the training and learning certification helps us do things. Um, all right, we pretty much got through automations. Wow, that was a lot. Please put your questions below. Um, workflows confuse me because I don't use them much. I'm much more familiar with automations. I will go through at some point and make um, a video on workflows to help folks out, probably next Monday. Um, but please get hands on with automations. It's the best way that I have found to learn them. Um, let me zoom out real quick. Our next session is next Monday. I'll probably schedule two more of these before I cycle on to the next ACP. Uh, please put your questions on today's session in here, but also your ideas on whichever ACP level should be next. Again, I'm thinking 120. I think that's the org admin. Um, just to keep it rolling, I'll get through all of these through a year. I need to plan out the schedule more. Next Friday, I'm starting up the ACA 900. So again, that's the basics of Jira's software. Um, so it's intended for end users. It will not be as in-depth or complicated as this one. Um, and I'll add to our, uh, flashcards later this week. Excuse me. I also have a whole whack of Udemy courses on different topics. Um, I've got a very long one. You're welcome, Scott. Uh, a very long one on JQL, if that's an area where you need help. Um, but I also have one on setting up, uh, service desk or service projects or help desks, which I've found very useful to build out to understand how it works. Um, so yeah, that's about all I have right now. Um, please keep engaging, please keep studying. Again, build out your own flashcards, build out something that works for you. Um, that makes sense in your way of studying. For me, the flashcards worked great. That was a wonderful way to do it, because it worked for my brain. Uh, but if that doesn't work for you and I can help, let me know and I'm happy to build out something um, additional. Ah, Frank, thank you. Honestly, Jira admin's probably a good one to go to next while this is fresh in our minds, because there'll be a lot of overlap. Workflows behave almost the same way. The only exception I can think of off the top of my head is approvals. Um, excuse me. Uh, automations are the same. We would have to deal with boards and epics probably and like develop software development. Uh, but 120 is probably a good next step. Um, y'all are welcome. So I'll leave the chat open for a bit while I play that beautiful outro video. Uh, but please let me know what you think of these sessions. I wanna make them useful for all of you. I am finding it very useful, because it's making me study. So thank you all for helping me learn and for sharing what you know. Uh, but let me know what I can do to make your study experience easier. Uh, we're not alone in this. There's a lot of great smart people out there who can help. But it's a special approval, Frank. He says jokingly. Um, all right, folks. So thank you again. I really appreciate you all coming. If you haven't, um, you know, please do that standard like and subscribe. Let me know what you're curious and learning. Be on the lookout for more videos. Uh, I'll have that one on workflow and I'll figure out one on naming convention. Uh, Kit Kat, I'm glad you enjoy it. I really like doing this. Um, I have a lot of fun. I hope other folks do too. Uh, Rebecca, which webpage? I'm sorry. Awesome. Kari, glad you find it useful. Barbara, good to see you. Um, Rebecca, I'm gonna stick around, um, if you can clarify which link you're looking for. I'm sorry, we've mentioned multiple ones. I'll put a couple more in the chat right now, uh, but I've got the studying stuff from our friends at Atlassian I can drop. Uh, is there? Uh, then I'll do one more on the learning courses. Uh, and then my LinkedIn is here. Oops, sorry, uh, the middle one, Rebecca. Um, and let me know if any of those look interesting. If you have uh, a hardship, like financial hardship or need help paying for those, let me know. I can help you out. Uh, Kari, I have to go through my pictures. I have so much stuff, uh, from team. It'll take me a little while to dig through it. Um, but if you can pop me an email or a LinkedIn message, I'll be happy to share it. Um, this one is my webpage, Rebecca, and that goes right to the learning courses. Um, ACP. And I'll share one for the homepage for the site. This one goes to the ACP 420, where all of my, uh, like links to the YouTube, the Discord, all that kinda good stuff. All right, folks. On that note, I'll keep the chat open, but have a great day wherever you are and I'll see you next week at the latest, but hopefully sooner in one of my other sessions.